I'm going to call the meeting to order. It is Veterans Day and we are all appreciative of the veterans and I would ask that... Sandy, would you help us with the flag?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Rowan, turn down half of the lights, please. I've called meeting to order. Everyone is here except Pat and Connie. Approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Call it favor?
Aye.
Are there any people in the room that would like to talk to us? Since you're all employees of the district? What would you have to say? Thank you. Okay. Approval of the minutes. I would suggest first October 14th, 2014, regular board meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Some more.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. October 28th, budget hearing, special board meeting. Motion to adjourn. A motion, please.
Second.
All in favor? Dave, you will review the donations, recognitions, and thank you notes. Yes, and by the way, I just remembered, Pat Baer has a meeting at the city. And I think it's the City Park and Recs or something like that. That was supposed to end by 5:30, he was going to be here on time. But if he was government's late, that's why. Just remembered. So, I do expect him to be there. Donations. We have a number of nice donations. Piano valued at $3,500 from Linda and Chris Klein. Number of donations to the FFA produce for the agri-science students and the use of 12 peppers by those students. Mrs. Durant wrote for a donorschoose.org grant and received it. She was able to buy an iPad Mini and a Swivel robotic platform valued at almost $800. In addition to the FFA, there were National FFA Convention sponsors. There's a long list of those sponsors in the packet. And those items, many were... We had one of the top FFA chapters and we were from Wisconsin, we were able to distribute products from Wisconsin, like cranberries and cheese and things like that. Mr., do you want to just talk a little bit about that, those donations?
Yeah. Because the Wapaka FFA was number one in the state yet this year, we have the opportunity to build and implement a booth at the National FFA Convention that revolves around Wisconsin agriculture and Wisconsin FFA. So, we received 500 pounds of cheese that was donated along with money, checks and cash from organizations and individuals. And so, it didn't cost us any money to... We made like a barn and we put a bunch of agricultural products in it and trophies on the bottom. And we had pumpkins and mumps around and gave away a bunch of stuff from the Wisconsin Milk Marketing Board, the cranberries and cheese. And I had, we had like little slices of premier cheese, novelty cheese. And that's kind of hard, it's hard cheese, it's hard to cut up. So, I had the kids go and barter. So, I gave them like two chunks of cheese and they had 15 minutes to go out to, you know, there's like, I don't know, Carl, like thousands of different colleges and Monsanto and Cargill and John Deere and Dodge, I mean, just all the big companies in the United States. So, they went out and bartered Wisconsin cheese with these entities and it was awesome. And then the final day, we had a contest of who could bring back the best stuff. And Ethan Roddy brought back a standard poodle. So, he won the contest.
Aye.
Yeah. So, he gave it back.
What was your question?
I thought that was something else.
A live dog?
Yeah.
He bartered that?
Yeah. There was a company here that was demonstrating clippers. So, they're clipping animals and, I mean, they had live donkeys and cows, I mean, and they have them in huge pens and there's turf down. It's just incredible. So, they got like those chargers for phones. One student got seven t-shirts. So, and the different companies enjoyed it too because instead of just giving, you know, they did a bar system. So, that was a good time.
Mom, guess what I brought home?
Was it a puppy?
No, it was a standard...
Big poodle dog.
Three parts.
A baby or...
No, she said it was full size.
Full size?
Yeah.
They're nice dogs.
They're wonderful dogs.
Yeah. It was nice to have that support from the community for giving things away representing Wisconsin at the nationals. So, thanks.
Where was that convention?
Louisville.
How'd you get it home?
The dog. Oh, we gave it back.
Oh.
Yeah. We said, "You should really have this dog." But they wanted to bring it back.
They all called their parents and none of them said yes. Oh, boy.
But what an eye-opener. Like, you know, they were afraid at first to go and approach people. You know, and of course, I had to demonstrate, so I went to Wrangler. You know, and they were giving away jeans and backpacks and, you know, and they were so like, "Oh, my God, yes, you know, Wisconsin cheese, we just love it." We've had people, you know, this is the fifth year in a row, and we've had people that just come and say like, "Oh, my God, we just could not wait to get the cheese," or, "Where do I buy the cheese?" Or, "What name brand is this cheese?" And the kids were shocked that when we went out to eat, one meal at the convention, the FFA alumni buys, because otherwise they just eat fast food and sometimes they don't feel so good and they get ornery. So, the FFA alumni buys them a meal. And they're shocked every year that milk is not on the menu. You know, iced tea is, water, soda, but not milk. So, it was a good experience.
Good. Thank you. The Wapaka Foundry donated 20 hard hats, residential building construction class valued at $860. Appreciate that. Speaking of Wapaka Foundry, it just got back from, they had a celebration of their sale to Itachi Metals in Stevens Point this afternoon. And so, they had a lot of dignitaries there, a lot of the management from the plants throughout the United States as well as all the new owners and management from Itachi. And I met the two of the three people who'll be living in Wapaka. There will be three people from Dupanwood living here. And it was a great, huge ceremony where they did the Saki barrels and they pounded the barrels in and they presented a Packer helmet and they presented a tablecloth. It was very nice. It's still going on with dinner and the celebration. So, it was in Stevens Point because all the hotels here are being used or filled. But a huge event. And I think it, from what I could hear from the presentations today, there are good things going to happen in Wapaka because of that joining of those two companies. Very respectful of what's already happening in Wapaka and eager to take it to the next level. It's good for Wapaka. It is very good for Wapaka. And according to the people from Itachi, it's very good for Itachi Metals as well. The goal is being global number one is the goal. Very, very nice people. Should be good for the schools. The relationship we have with Foundry has always been good for the schools, but this is going to be even better. And then the last donation, Rotary Grant Awards this year, totaling $10,645. As I put in my notes, I think that takes us over $50,000 from Rotary towards these grants over the last five years. We have five teachers going to Rotary meeting tomorrow to receive a symbolic check. And then County Post will be there and write an article about those donations over the years, the things that have been bought with the grants. And we should have a nice feature in the paper about that. I think you saw in the packet the types of things that were written for this year. And I know the Rotary always says, "I wish we could do more." And they actually have done more. For example, they used to award the Rue Goldberg entry fee of $500 through this grant program. But they're doing it every year and they value it so much, they pulled that out of the grant and just said, "We're just going to fund that automatically separate from these grant dollars and continue to spend over $10,000 for the rest of it." So, we would need a motion to accept all the donations with appreciation. Is there a motion?
Yes. Some more.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Recognition. Kier Morsey once again is named an accompanist for the Wisconsin School Music Association, High School State Honors Mix Choir. And Bob Welch, named educator of the year for the Wisconsin Association for Environmental Education. Will be receiving that award at a celebration in Madison.
Has he done that before?
I don't think he's been educator of the year. He's received awards from them before, but Ben, you know what?
This is his first time receiving that award.
That particular one?
Yeah, he collected it on Saturday. And we had a pep rally for him the day before. And he was choked up that day and he was choked up at the ceremony that, on Saturday as well. So, he never had to say a word, but he was very appreciative.
Good guy. I'd also like to recognize Ms. Kathy Allen and the King and I who were there last week on Saturday night. I just thought it was outstanding, the number of kids participating and the costumes, the acting, singing, it was all very good. And I thought the audience was very appreciative of her when she spoke at that intermission and obviously the students and the support. So, we'd like to recognize that too. Thank you notes. We have a number of thank you notes. I won't go through them. I would like to mention the Never Forgotten Honor Flight that was in your packet as well. One of our former students. And was it worked on last year?
Yeah.
Started last year as she was a student. And she's graduated now. Do you want to talk just a little bit about that?
Nicole Jokowski. A lot of her family members have served in the military. And if you remember, it was her and Morgan Ehlers when they were sophomores that worked to plan and implement Kids Against Hunger. Well, before they graduated, they, Nicole wanted to do one more thing for the community. And she wrote donation letters and collected enough money to send three veterans to the memorial. And they came into the school and Carl was with us and did an outstanding presentation on behalf of the school district. And they talked about why it was so important that they're going to see the monument. And we saw some tears and it was tremendous. So, Nicole did a good job.
Very nice. There was an article in the paper about that. I hope it's going. Okay. This takes us to school. School Board. Anybody have any visits?
Well, we want to hear about yours on the shooting range.
There wasn't much to be said because it's been a long time since I've shot trap or anything like that. So, I think, actually, I think they gave me blanks. That's the only thing I can think of is the problem.
Makes sense.
Wouldn't that be a good trick? I think that's what it is, but I couldn't be that bad. So, you know, they had about, they had eight kids. Normally, they have closer to 15. And it was a little chilly out there. So, it was interesting and I think the kids all liked it and they're sitting out there in the cold and I think it's a good sport for these kids. Lifelong sport.
And I went a little earlier and got their...
When it was warmer.
The sun was still out a little bit. And I got a chance to talk with a couple of the parents who were also there and John Woodliffe and then some of the other adults. It's, I'm so glad we did this. I mean, it's really nice for these kids who might, who weren't necessarily participating in other sports, but really do well here. And it's really a mental exercise. I also did some shooting. With, thank heavens, Jenny Abrahamson, one of the, a mother of one of the students, agreed to go out there with me, so I wasn't all by myself. And she hit two of her four. Carls? Yeah. She was like Annie Oldley. It was very... Time. Yeah. And I missed all of mine. But it was great fun and, you know, it requires a lot, it's a mental sport. It requires a lot of concentration. It requires a lot of being in the moment and really paying attention to what you're doing. I think it's terrific and the meets are going to be the strongest. They have had a top of 18 students participating at one point. They're down to about 12. I think maybe they'll have as many as 30 next year. And when I was there, they were inviting the students who weren't out in the cold shooting, who seemed perfectly comfortable. To write their thoughts about the program, you know, what they liked about it, what they thought might be done better, what they'd like to see in the future. And it was sort of quiet. The kids were all really nice, as you might expect, and the adults were really nice. It was just fun. I go back, I learned that on Tuesday evenings in the summer, they do this trap shooting. And they also have a skeet shooting range. I didn't know there was a difference. I do now.
Can you tell us that difference?
Well, the trap has a single, this is very, we were standing up, Nicole Ronbrooks was explaining to me, the trap has a single target, a bird. And skeet is more like hunting ducks or something, so you have a low bird and a high bird and you might shoot both with them if you're good. And you have a different kind of gun, which I don't know anything, I don't know anything about gun technology.
It's, I think that is a five-shot. And the one that we use tonight is a one-shot because you have to, one, two, like an automatic.
I see. You might have more than one bullet or with a cartridge?
Bullets. It's not what they call them, but...
No, it was lovely. I'm really, really glad I went. It was very fun.
I went to the high school and had a nice visit. I was able to talk with a lot of teachers and started in the food area and Mrs. Schwalmberg was just finishing up with her freshmen. They were making pumpkin bars and she said, "Half of her students are gentlemen." So, she said it was really something. There were 25 of them in that class, all washing dishes and stoves. And there was a lot of activity going on. And they produced pumpkin bars. It was pretty cool. Then I talked to Rhonda Gutske, who said that in her Culinary One class, the kids are doing presentations right now on international foods, where they have to create a PowerPoint and talk about the country and the types of food that are served in that country and the cultures and the customs. And then they have to prepare a food that is, comes from that culture. So, they had just had hushpuppies, so it was a Cajun demonstration. And she said the food was delicious and the young man did a really nice job of that. When I was in the hallway, I happened to see Mrs. Gamski and...
Gamski.
Gamski and Ashley Benning. Yeah. And they're seventh and eighth grade LDE teachers. And they were, had come from the middle school to the high school to follow up on the eighth graders that they had sent last year from middle school to high school, to find out how they were doing, how they were performing, if things could be changed, if they could help or whatever. So, they had spent the day there and apparently this is the first time, first morning, that was the first time that this had happened. And they were so grateful to you for allowing that and they couldn't believe what they learned from their visit today and how it will help them with programming and setting up curriculum and whatever. So, they were most appreciative and wanted me to mention that. I went to Joe Jansen's social studies class, which was incredible because the social, he gave me the whole lowdown on Chromebooks and how the whole social studies department, all five of them, are now using Chromebooks in their class. There are no textbooks. And everything is being done online through curriculum that he picks out through different universities and museums and different websites. And he demonstrated to me, when I walked in, the young people were all reading an article on their Chromebooks. He was at his desk and as they made annotations on their computer, it would pop up on his and he could comment right back while they were reading. So, he had 27 or 25 students going on at the same time he was able to be in contact with each one. He said at night, it's great because when they're on computers at home doing their homework, he can be logged in and they can have conversations back and forth. This is the second year he's been doing it and he said, "While initially it was a lot of work to find the curriculum and, you know, get it online," he really feels that it's been really beneficial. And more than anything, it's teaching, along with social studies, it's teaching young people study skills, how to do research, how to study, how, you know, to read and analyze. But he did say there is something still to taking notes. And research has found that it's still important for people to write because by writing they learn. So, he is, they're encouraged to do the work on the computer, but also take some notes on the side too. It was really impressive what he did. So, that was a great visit. Then I went into the egg science room and they were doing a presentation on dogs, where they all had to research a breed of dogs and present it to the class and tell about the breed of dogs and whatever. And it was very interesting. Learned a lot about different breeds of dogs. Visited the computer science lab or Mr. Polbisky's lab. He was, he had a graphic design class in there that was incredible. And he was teaching them how to look at a logo and duplicate it. So, the young people were working on the Valley Conference logo. So that in the future, if anybody goes into graphic design, if someone would come in and say, "I want this duplicated," they know how to do it. So, he said his graphic design classes are very large because the kids love the creativity that's involved in that and the art involved in it. He said unfortunately, though, computer programming is not as popular, which is too bad, he said, because it's like one of the top occupations in the country where there are not enough young people going into it. He said that this year, there were 400,000 unfilled programming jobs in the United States because young people are going more into the graphic design as opposed to computer programming. So, anyway, he said it was just great and the kids are great and it was really fun to watch them recreate them. Then on the way out, I was in the hallway and I heard this loud music and like brass. And Mr. Kreschek was practicing with the band in the auditorium and the doors were open. So, it was like 50's music coming out. It was great. So, I stood there and gave him a standing ovation. And then on my way out, I happened to see Kathy Allen. And she was still, I think, floating from musicals. So, we talked a bit about how awesome it was. She also is very appreciative of the opportunity here and also the support from the parents of the young people. So, it was a great visit.
Were you there all day?
I was there for one hour. That all got done.
Really?
Yeah. One hour. Actually, 55 minutes. So, there you have it.
Good for you. Thank you, Betty.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Steve, I actually have two other visits that I have to report on that I haven't, and I'll be quick. But several months ago, I went over to the charter school, the CSU five charter school that we participated in. And Erin Katzmarak, who is the head teacher, the lead teacher there, spent an hour talking with me about that. There weren't a lot of students around at the time, but it was very interesting and I've never been able to get there during the times that they give tours where the students are actually presenting. But I did come away thinking, "This is really a good investment. It's good for the students, it's good for the community." They have a three to one student to staff ratio. They do combine, they have day treatment and education that they provide for the students. And Erin had said that really, he sees the goal of bringing kids there, it's to give them sort of a reset so that they feel good about participating in the school. And it was very interesting. Nice that the program is available so close to us and we're able to send students there. We think that's a good program.
We think we have good staff there and the model, bringing in the day treatment, has been very helpful.
Yeah. And that's handled to the north of train, some of the students have been, and there's a strong emphasis on that as well.
And the population is getting younger and younger. We started out with high school kids, now we're down to fifth, sixth graders.
Those are the kids that I saw, the kids that were in the building at that time. Seemed quite young to me. Erin and the other staff pick the students up each night. So, there are, they won't wait intermittently at a student's house, but they pick them up every morning, bring them to and from school. And then I also went and met with Ann Collins Reed, who's also very generous with her time, just talking about the school district and about some of the challenges she faces. And I asked her, "Well, Ann, do you think things are getting better or do you think they're getting worse?" She said she thinks our programs are getting better, that we're providing much better programs, that the level of poverty in the area is getting worse. And it presents a lot of challenges. And I know that she'll be gearing up for some of the Christmas activities that she does soon and I volunteered to help with that. I think it involves shopping and ramping, so I can do that. But yeah, she's a tough and interesting job. And one of my thoughts about after I retire is that maybe I'll make an effort to help with truancy by picking up students myself. If people need that. And I passed the background check.
Better start now.
Yeah, I know. Working on that. Anyway, both of, it was time well spent to talk with these people about what they do. And I think the level of enthusiasm and commitment to the work that they do is extremely admirable and very good for the community and for our district and the students.
Good. I think it's really good that we all are in the school district and I think it's important that we're seen there and it's a good way for us to understand how lucky we are. We have a great staff and a great situation. And it's nice that we can all get in there and see what's really, really happening in the trenches. There are three people up for election in the spring. Sandy, who has been on the school board for 22 years. Betty, for 12 years. And Steve, for 15 years. And I would point Carol Byer McCusick as the deputy clerk for the elections. She has done that for, ever since I can remember. And committee action and reports. Okay. Future dates, November 16th to 22nd is American Education Week we'll be celebrating. And December 9th is our next regular school board meeting at 5:45 PM. That takes us to school calendars. I'd like to open this up by just talking about process a little bit.
I'd like to open this up by just talking about process a little bit. We generally do this, in the past we've been doing three-year calendars, setting calendars out for three years in, in advance. So that's what we started off with the intent to do that. After we accounted for all the dates and made sure that there were enough school days, that we had the correct amount of professional development days, et cetera. Just as placeholders in the calendar, I turned it over to Ms. Rhonda Hare to start looking at what are the best times to have early dismissal dates and things like that. What's good about it, what doesn't work with it. Then we turned it over to cabinet, brought it to cabinet last week and that would include all of our supervisors and ministers. And we started looking at all the factors that go into developing a calendar. And now more than ever, a lot of the dates, we try to work around testing. Because the testing window is set in Alabama State and there are some decisions that we made to, to make sure that we had ample time to test and weren't interfering with that time. So we put together a draft three-year calendars that we thought looked pretty good. And I asked them then to take it out to their staff, teachers, sports staff, who have reports to them. And to start talking about the calendars and asking if they had any concerns, suggestions for things different. I thought it was a way to get everybody involved rather than just have a few people who come to this meeting and start talking to you. And influencing from, influence from a few people. This way we could get comments from, from everyone. One of the major changes has to do with the professional development day. In the previous calendars, there was a placeholder a day accounted for in the calendar. Where teachers would be one of their one hundred eighty-eight paid days, but it was a day that they would put in on their own, weekends or evenings. Doing their own professional development. As we talked about it, we thought it was a lot of record keeping. A lot of times it might not be quite as beneficial as we would hope it to be. And there are more things going on internally that we need to focus on. So where it used to be, you could do your own professional development and there was a wide range of activities. Now we're just, people are being asked to do more with educator effectiveness, things like infinite campus. That, there is no longer the request or the, still the need, but it's not so widespread anymore. So we thought, why don't we bring that into the calendar? Create another day off for kids. But bring teachers in that day where we can work together on some of those things, like writing SLOs and a number of writing curriculum and things like that. So we floated that idea out among teachers and it was very well received. Concern was, number of people have already earned hours towards next year. So if we went into next year, what would happen to those people? I think we could accommodate that with either buying them out of that time or giving compensated time for that. We'll, we'll work that out. But the concept was, was well received. So we looked for a day to put that in the calendar. Calendar you received in advance had that day on the Tuesday of Thanksgiving week. Which would mean kids come on Monday, kids have off Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Staff come on Tuesday and do that professional development day. We put that idea out amongst the teachers and there is probably overwhelming concern about having only one day of school during that week of Thanksgiving. So the calendar that you're going to look at tonight has moved that date in all three years to the Monday after Thanksgiving. Which would mean the students would still have Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday off. Teachers would have Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, come back on Monday. So there's a little bit longer break there for students, teachers to come back on that Monday. Create a two-day week on Thanksgiving, a four-day week the next. So with, with that background, I put out at, at your place a summary of the calendars. So I'd like to go over that and it'll, I think it'll help that we won't have to look at each calendar and every day. Because this pretty much summarizes the major changes. All calendars, all three years eliminate the professional development day. That's the day I talked about. It's now scheduled to Monday following Thanksgiving break. We redesigned the parent-teacher conference hours to be determined by building, to be used for but not limited to parent-teacher conference time, open house, curriculum writing, in-service, professional development, other needs of the district as determined by administration. We will attempt to schedule three two-hour sessions in fall and three in spring in addition to open house hours at beginning of the year. Buildings will work together to determine actual dates. This concept was then floated out again today by principals and I, I only heard back from John. I would ask the others to let me know if there was, or speak up if there was general disagreement with that. But in the past, teachers have been asked to volunteer their time for open house. In addition, depending on the level, the parent-teacher conferences are not very well received or, or attended. So we could still have parent-teacher conferences using this time. But because of the communication we have with students and with parents through infinite campus and other ways. There's becoming less of a need for actual parent-teacher conferences, particularly at middle school and high school though. So we're going to redesign that, that time. Elementary feels the need to have more parent-teacher conferences. They can use that time for parent-teacher conferences, but it doesn't have to be used that way by middle school or high school. Teachers thought that was a good idea from what I heard. Ben's shaking his head. The rest of them, I heard nothing contrary to that. But it gives us that flexibility. Well, I'll get to goals accomplished, but that's, that's that. I'll come back to it. There is a five-day spring break the week prior to Easter Sunday. So incorporates Good Friday in each of the calendars. Each calendar starts school after September one as per state statute. And the end date scheduled each year is June sixth or earlier, leaving Room Four and Clement whether make-up days. Some of the goals we accomplished with these three calendars, overwhelming but not unanimous, I point that out, desire for the extended spring break. The opposition goes small. Very legitimate comes from coaches who say that they lose access to kids at high school because of the band or choir trip. In addition to the spring break, AP teachers who teach AP courses say it's not good for the kids to be away for, for that long a time at that time of year. But there were people who expressed that we made their, how was that worded, John? We made their day, month and year by going back to the, the full week of, of spring break. We accomplished additional open house, curriculum writing, in-service and professional development hours for teachers with the flexibility to include parent-teacher conferences as desired by building. And this is accomplished without increasing the number of early dismissal days, which has been known to inconvenience parents. We think, we still think that if we had the opportunity to do it, we would create more early dismissal days throughout the year. But we do know that that is a inconvenience to parents who have to figure out how to take care of their kids during that time. So we accomplished the goal of adding more hours by redesigning the current two days that are set aside for parent-teacher conferences. Teachers are very appreciative that we're even looking at compensating them for the open house attendance at the beginning of the school period. To be determined, the scheduling of early dismissal days in two thousand fifteen and sixteen are considered set at this time. But will be reviewed prior to the sixteen, seventeen and seventeen, eighteen school years. So what we're saying there is that the calendar will reflect the actual days for next year for early dismissal. But we're trying some different things on those days and we'd like to make sure they're going to work before we repeat the same thing with the following two years. But we'll do that well in ahead in advance. But we wanted to give it a trial during the first year. The redesign of parent-teacher conference hours will also be on a trial year basis. Recommendations for improvement will then be considered for the following two years. We're able to do both of the above without affecting the actual student calendar in terms of school attendance days. So we feel comfortable proposing a three-year calendar with those conditions in the last two years to be determined. Because it won't change the dates that people will need to schedule around because of school. So those are the highlights. We did invite and made it very clear to those, to teachers that by this, using this process of going to schools and gathering information from entire staff people. Does not preclude them from coming to this meeting and expressing their desire, why, why they want something different. And I really expected them to be here or more people to be here. My guess is by them not being here that overall the calendars are acceptable. I, I think there will be pockets of disagreement but nothing overwhelming and nothing that fixing one pocket doesn't mean you're not going to have a different pocket of disagreement. So we think we've accomplished a lot. We really thought differently about these days. The flexibility that the legislature gave us in not having to have a certain number of student contact days have helped us. Because those two parent-teacher conference days in the past were part of our one hundred and eighty student contact days, by law they could be. So if we redesigned them, redesigned them last year, we would have had to put two more days in of school for kids in order to meet the statute. So because of that flexibility now, we can still have the same number of minutes for kids as we did before, which we have to do by law. But we can use those parent-teacher conference days a little bit differently.
Dave, when I was in the high school today, a few teachers came up and commented that we'd be talking about the calendar tonight. And they expressed their appreciation that they were all considered in their desires. They, they really commented on that and how much they appreciated having input into the calendar. So they wanted that to be expressed.
Good, thank you. Looks like graduation will be what, the middle of June?
No.
It was set before.
But it says the last day of school is June sixth?
Graduation is always a weekend, the last day of.
By policy, it's the week, it's the weekend after.
Sunday before the last day.
Sunday before the last day of school. So graduation will be before June sixth. Graduation date's a whole separate topic. That's a spent time on.
It gets hotter and hotter and hotter.
Well, these are actually earlier dates than we've been out in the past.
Dave, I hate to bring this up, but the dreaded snow day thing?
Yeah.
Where does this leave us with that?
It's the same process. If we have snow days, we have the option to make them up at the end of the year. Board has the option to determine how the calendar year will end. We'll still have the requirement, requirement to meet the number of minutes. So we, we're not taking any minutes away by doing this, same number we had last year. So we'll address the snow days at the end of the year as well.
In the past, we've been over on minutes, so we haven't had to make up all our snow days?
That has not changed. We have the same number of minutes.
So we'll still?
Still have that same flexibility, yes.
For the instructors that have concern, whether it's AP courses or whatever specific area that they're involved in. Other than loading students up before the break, what options, if any, do they realistically have?
Well, we, we talked about this and there's going to come a time sooner rather than later that we have to address the music trips. The week-long absence from music trips. Because that's their concern. There are two weeks that students are missing. So if we reschedule the music trips to take place, for example, during that week. Or change them in some other way that we give the kids back to the teachers.
They're every other year though. Usually two weeks.
Right, but then you've got the things, the, the spring break makes the second week of that, of that year. Rod, you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, actually after our meeting this morning, I went back and talked with some of our music staff about it. And they, they feel that the trip that they take is very, very important in the education of their students. That their students rise to a new level in preparation for that trip and that trip exposes them to things that they wouldn't be exposed to otherwise. But they also understand that it's a new time in the world of education and you know, right now, we're, we're looking at the spring. And the multitude of tests that our students are going to need to take, the, the ACT test, the work keys test. The ASPIRE test at both the freshman and sophomore level. The MAPS test at both the freshman and sophomore level. And we're not sure how we're going to fit all that stuff in and still have time to teach. And so the thought of, you know, a hundred and twenty of our students leaving us for a five-day band trip during the middle of all that testing. Really has some people scared right now. But we're gonna, we're gonna try and make it through this year, see how that goes. There is a music trip scheduled. It's a choir trip to New York. And we'll see how everything goes. And, and if, if we find that with all the testing that we need to do, that the music trip is no longer feasible. We'll look towards some sort of a compromise that still gives our students a, a great experience. Maybe it's a, a weekend trip coupled with a day or two of our spring break. Maybe it's not out to New York. Maybe it's to Louisville or St. Louis or something instead. But we'll cross those bridges when we come to them. We have heard through this process, there are several teachers that are concerned about the music trip that students go on just because of the lost time. And it's great that we have teachers advocating for time in the classroom. They want time with those students. They don't want them being taken away from them. So that, that's a wonderful thing to have. So we'll work it out and, and yeah, we'll, we'll have some tough times and, and yeah, we may have to look long and hard at some of the traditions that we've had. But we can still keep the spirit of the tradition and, and just provide some small changes maybe and still, still make both sides happy.
So the AP courses, and I know Mr. Velt teaches an AP course online which is called a blended course. There's certainly opportunity to keep kids involved over that spring break through blend, blended learning. So I think the more we get into students doing, watching videos of the presentation, the, of the lecture and doing their work online. We're going to get more and more of that stuff, particularly at the high level courses. So in answer to your question, Steve, there are other ways to address that. It'll happen over time.
Do you need a motion to approve calendars as presented?
Yes.
Just for a second. Do you want a vote? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much. I do think it was the process that we used this year, that we were allowed to use. I wish you'd made some people very, very happy. Board monitoring. We had room for a food service presentation. I know that was requested a while ago. And I thought as long as we can, let's put it onto the regular board agenda. So our food service director, Mr. Fugart, is, is here. I don't know, are you tag teaming or are you all alone?
Am I what?
Are you working with Mr. Hayek or?
He's just here to, to.
Bother you?
Give me water when I need it.
You know, to, to preface this or to set it up. Those who read the news about school lunches over the last couple of years know that some school districts are saying it's not worth it for us anymore. Because of the federal requirements for lunch, kids aren't eating, food's being tossed away. There are real issues. Some schools in Wisconsin have actually said, we're not going to participate in the federal lunch program. We'll do our own. That has become a hot topic. So that's what said, well, let's, let's talk about how it's affecting, what's happening in what packet in that regard in particular.
I think all of you have in front of you packet. There are some extras here in case anyone wants it. I tried to boil it down as much as I could because since the two thousand ten Healthy Hunger for Kids Act, there's been at least over two hundred changes and memos and, and clarifications to the final and interim rule. And it's just been a nightmare to try to keep track of all of it. So what you have in front of you is, is kind of just the bullet points of it. It's, you know, there's more fruits and vegetables required now. We always had fruits and vegetables. It's not something new, but now there's a requirement of certain types of vegetables throughout the week, which is fine. You know, it's, it's doable. It's, it's, it gets a little strange with, if I'm short some type of vegetable, I might have to put it on a day that I wouldn't necessarily put it. It doesn't go with it as well. But it's, it's, it's all, it's, it's all doable. The whole grains, this year, all of the whole grains have to be whole grain rich, which is fifty percent or more. The first ingredient has to be a whole grain. That's been a little bit more challenging to find products that, that, that you can't quite. Like the biscuit for instance, it's, it's kind of shrunken. It's like a hockey puck. It's, it's kind of shrunken, and it's like a hockey puck. So we have to go, you know, back to what we can find. I go back to the drawing board and look for another one. So some of this, when they rush these manufacturers to change all these products quickly, just because, you know, when you lower sodium and you lower fat and you increase this, these, these complicated formulas, they, they try to put it out to sell it, and it's, it's not always quite there yet. So some of the companies that have started years ago, I've noticed that their products are much more acceptable to kids, and, and it's not as noticeable. But some of them, they're still in the tweaking mode. So that's the whole grain thing. We're kind of hoping as SNA, the School Nutrition Association, that they just kind of pause with it, allowing some things to not necessarily whole grain, just to allow these companies to, to catch up in some products. For instance, like, some of the whole-grain pastas just don't hold well. They mush up, and, and so these companies have to reformulate their products and give us a chance to get the guidelines under control. Sodium limits this year was another reduction in sodium. It can be noticed in some of the products, especially like the tomato sauces and the tomato products. It's more noticeable with the, the high school and middle school students than the younger ones, again, as well. So they're, they're asking for, for that to be kind of held off a little bit more. Now we have calorie maximums and minimums, which we always had a range, but now they actually have the maximum, minimums. Limits on unhealthy fat, that's been the same, the 10%, no more than 10% for saturated fat. Low-fat and fat-free milk, that changed a couple of years ago. We used to be able to have 2%, but a couple of years ago, they said, "No, you can have low-fat white, but if you're going to have any kind of flavored milk, be it chocolate or strawberry or whatever, it has to be fat-free." So we have opted with the fat-free chocolate and the 1% white and also the skim white. Free water, we do have water available in all the cafeterias. The chain school has the cooler that they can get their water from.
Do we use the water bombs as our water?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, they don't, they don't require us to have bottled water available. It's just, there were some schools in Milwaukee that didn't even have any water within the vicinity at all for students, so. They did originally have the limits on the grains and the protein, and that is when we, as a district, took the biggest hit, and not just us, but just as a nation. For instance, at the high school, you went from a six-inch sub that had over two ounces of protein on it to a four-inch sub, which some days it could be two ounces, but there was going to have to be a day or two when it wasn't to meet the 10, to meet the guidelines. And it was really trying to get that in there, and it was very noticeable. So they did relax that, and now we're back up to a five-inch sub. So those are some of the things that were a result of what happened. On the second page, it kind of goes into a nutshell, and I don't know if you really want to go through all of that, or, or I think you get the gist of some of these requirements. I mean, I can go through it if you so choose, but I'd kind of rather spend my time telling, telling you what we are doing instead of, you know, these aren't going to change. I still have to follow them. Some things I agree with, some things I, I have a difference of opinion. However, you know, I have to do my best to, to follow, follow the regulations. And some of those that say that, you know, that they're going to get out of the national school lunch program, if you turn to the one that starts with the fund balance, it looks, it's got the red on top, which is nothing I'm proud of, but you can see our fund balance has gone down 234,000. That's about $23,000 loss last year. Now, if.
Wasn't that some of that for equipment, or not? This is all, no?
It is. No.
Okay.
And at the bottom, on the bottom of that page, you have the federal reimbursement for last year, and that was $467,000, $68,000. That's just the federal reimbursement. That's what we get back from the government. Also, in addition to that, we get entitlement dollars from, from the federal government based on our lunches the previous year where, where we can buy USDA foods. Used to be called commodities. Now they call it USDA foods. Now you can accept what they call the brown box, which is the, the processed foods or the canned or the dried or whatever that the state will manufacture for you. But I do something different, and it's called direct diversion. So I take raw products and divert it to companies like Lando-Likes Cheese, like Pilgrim's Pride Chicken to JTM. So I get to choose these products, and it's, it's nice to have that option. However, it's kind of like a crapshoot sometimes because you have to have 40,000, or 40,000 pounds to make one semi-load, and you have to have a full semi-load to be brought into the state of Wisconsin. So one time, I, I was so excited, I was getting this Asian chicken, and it was, it was going to be new, there was nothing, no gluten, it was out, minimally processed, and, and I didn't get it, so I lost 900 pounds because there wasn't enough to bring in, too. So that's the offshoot of it. It's, it's kind of an up and down. But I still like the fact that I can get to choose, choose products and not be stuck with something that is just, here's your chicken nugget. You know, they are whole grain now, they did, are lower in fat. They're, they're trying to be less processed, but it is, it is a balancing act, you know, I'm not. But I can guarantee I'm not the first person that's ever served a child a chicken nugget or a pizza. You know, you kind of have to balance out what they will eat with, with what is, you know, healthy for them. So it's hard to give up almost over $500,000 worth of, of money coming into the department. I, I'm not sure how we would ever make that up, to be honest.
It's as if, when I talked about the budget, the budget's $1 million, so it's 50% funded by the feds. So if we were to go of that, you can see the fund balance would go away, and we'd have to skyrocket food prices. Sure, we could serve, we could go down and serve a multitude of, of different types of meals, but we're, people are struggling to pay those meal prices now, and they're minimal. What would we accomplish meal prices for people other than that, and had to fund it somehow through the district? So, and there's perception out there. I was at the nutrition center the other day. These cookies are gluten-free, by the way, back here, gluten-free cookies at the table, so. And the perception was, well, from.
Where are they ending from?
I don't think they're gone. It's gone.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Wait till this is done. Can I? Doing the same ones that you always have.
So those schools, those schools fit within the guidelines?
No.
But with, with that aspect, their aspect, they were talking, and they're, they're at, they had the perception that school lunches, well, you don't serve lasagna, you don't serve, and they're saying, "No, yes, they do." So there's perception, there's a public perception that perhaps we're trying to market to overcome that what's indeed being served, what's the truth versus reality, reality versus perception. So that's, we're struggling to get that out there.
Right. I mean, you know, in some schools that, that they're all in one campus, like the K-12, and maybe they have three choices at the high school, and maybe two for the middle school and the elementary. So that's what's, I can't yet, five choices? I have 11 just for lunch, and all of these lines have to match. And I, and I love giving the variety and all of that, and this year, we're trying to do some things with signature salads at the high school. We've started out with three, and, and we're making them and putting them in the shells, and, and so we're trying, and, and that's been receptive. We're doing different things with the wraps and some different recipes that we're trying. So like today, for instance, we have the sweet potatoes. It's kind of a farm-to-school thing that we're, we're also implementing in the menus and trying to market, and we had sweet potato sticks with the salsa ranch dip at the Learning Center. And we had, it wasn't bad-bad.
Were they raw or cooked?
They were raw. They were raw. And that's one of the value-added things that I look at, is we're not going to, we don't have the labor and the equipment to, to cut these things, so where can I get a reasonable, that is already value-added, that is already minimally, is not even really processed, it's just, it's ready to go. So we had that, and, and we also had, you know, the salads, and we're making spinach salads with strawberries and, and different things. So my goal is to, to continue to, to market. I'd like to get on a website, you know, food service on a website, but all these good ideas, it's just time. Time is just a real killer. And, you know, when I'm doing all of these reports for the government, this one, I was fortunate enough to, and if anyone would like it, it's my only copy because I was, afforded it because I was one of 2,002 people in the United States to fill that out. Now, I thought, either they think I'm a food service genius. No, I don't think it's that. I probably filled it with the one that did it, but anyway, I was chosen to do that. So all of these things, you know, I'm not saying my job is so complicated, but it really, all the details have to just fall into place. Controlling costs, again, with the direct diversion. We do bids, compare everything, cost comparisons. I'm going to work with Connie Abbott again with the farm-to-school. We're working on that. We've had, we did have a local apples from Lucy's Farm, I believe it was called, but they only lasted a month. So now we're working on, we got some cranberries for November, and we're looking, we're working on honey for December, a local honey producer. So all of these things, I've got a grant program coming up, going to write for an equipment grant. I wanted to be in a pilot program for a fresh fruit and vegetable thing from CISA II, so, you know, and also, and I'm bamboozling, I know, but.
Oh, it's interesting.
I'm trying to, to get it all in and, and tell you what we're trying to do. There was also a program where, to note how many interested people in the CISA II buying group, which is about 70 schools, huge, huge buying group, would be interested in getting ground beef that's, that's just croptidrin, it doesn't have the additives of the soy or the other byproducts that, and so we're very interested. There's also a program where I can look into getting some free-range chicken. So I'm doing what I can. I'm, I'm hoping to market that and to, to let the people know and the, and the parents know what we are doing. It is just, it's very challenging to fit these guidelines and cost because it is a balancing act. I don't have unlimited labor, I don't have unlimited funds, but there's a lot we can do, and it's a lot that we are doing. We did some trivia contests and some coloring contests, and the, the kids won prizes, and they were getting excited about some of the things, and now we have try-me's. If you take the try-me all this month, you get a little ticket, and if you bring the ticket back, you can get a prize, and so they'll come up to the, the meal checkers and go, "I'm trying those sweet potatoes." So it's, it's getting, you, those are really cute. So we're doing the best we can to market.
Derek, talk about the food going reporting. How does federal government know that there's in compliance?
They, they do, well, I have to attest to it, number one. Every time that I.
Do you just hold your hand up and say, "I do"?
Pretty much. No, seriously, they do the, the analysis, and then what I had to submit to be certified for the sixth sense was two years ago, and that analyzed and it, it wrote down actual usage of that week's menu. So it's what, actually, the kids took what they ate and all the percentages, that had to be submitted to them, and then I was able to receive the sixth sense certification. So, and there, you continue with the rest of your menus to do that, but you don't pose it to them until they come to your school. So I suppose, you know, it's, you know, it's not something that you have, you know, out on a website or anything like that, but just.
But you do fill out a lot of reports, I see.
Yeah.
What type of food and numbers and.
It's incredible what they, what, what they want, you know.
I will say that I was quite amazed the last time that you spoke with us about this, and I continue to be amazed at how you do what you do within the constraints of the various regulations. I thank you.
Thank you.
In that respect. I do have one question, which may sound a bit strange, but I, I've never been very knowledgeable about calories, and there are certain ranges in here for, I'll use a high school in particular. I've got two kids who, when they're at home, eat an awful lot, and I don't know, is, for a lot of students, high metabolism, whatever, is the 750 to 850 calorie, what, what does that mean?
Is one-third of the daily requirements.
Right, but what does that mean as to the type of volume that we're talking? I mean, you mentioned a five-inch sub, for example, but within these guidelines.
Oh.
I can guarantee you, when the boys get home, a five-inch sub is not going to do it for dinner.
Right.
So I guess I'm, I'm just trying to get a feel for it within these regulations, and I realize it's not necess, they're not set to necessarily feed those with high metabolisms, but they're also necessarily regulated to ensure that there is a healthy meal, et cetera, et cetera, but I'm just trying to get some sort of feel as to what kind of.
Quantity or what, what is, what would that entail?
Well, how it's done is, again, you take every, the six lines at the high school, for instance, you take every entree, every side salad, every, or everything that was on there, the fruit, and you take the production records. This is what the students actually took. You plug it into the computer, which is a NutraKids program, and it takes into consideration how many people took the pizza versus how many people took the sub, and everything is averaged out. So it's not a, a case-by-case of, or one line by one line. And they, they determine that this is a one-third daily requirement for that age group as an average.
So like, in the 750 to 850 calories, would that be like a sandwich, a piece of fruit, what?
Oh, it'd be a sa, it's a, it's the sandwich, it's the fruit, it's the vegetable, it's, they're offered to, to take two vegetables, or two fruits and vegetables, and the milk, you know, they can.
Can they, I know in the past, they used to be able to, be able to buy a second helping of things. Can they do that now? So they can go over the calories? I mean, if they bought a second helping.
Right, because that's considered an à la carte item, and that isn't included in that analysis, so.
And how about breakfast? Is that a big seller? I mean, do a lot of people?
Um, at the high school, it's about 110 a day. Same at the Learning Center. Chain is around 20.
And is that people that choose to buy breakfast, or is that free breakfast?
It's, because I give the reduced and the reduced away for free, so they have an opportunity. There's more free reduced than there is paid, but there are some paid students that also to take it, so.
Do we serve any kind of meals during summer school?
No.
Could we?
You have to be 50% or more free and reduced.
Of your enrollment?
Precisely.
To qualify for federal funding? I mean, we can choose to do it ourselves if we want to.
I, I'm not sure about that. I mean, I guess if we wanted to do it on our own without any reimbursement, it would be something.
But 50% of the students would have to qualify.
To get re.
To get the free reduced.
What are we, the free reduced, what percent? 40-something, isn't it?
43%. It was in September. It's around 40. Change this a little bit.
You know, what is the impact of these, of the standards? Are kids eating this stuff, are, you know, people through the lunchroom and you look in the garbage after, which I've done a couple of times, doesn't seem like they're throwing away more, they're, they're receptive to these guidelines, they don't? I'm just wondering what the impact is.
I think the impact in the beginning was when we had to tell them, "You need to take more fruits and vegetables," or "We can't count it." They were taking it and, and not, not eating it, throwing it away. At the, at the elementary level, we cut up the fruit forum, we meant, we put signs with, with colorful things so that they'll take it because they want to take it and not because they have to. At the Learning Center, or the middle school and the high school, if they take the banana, hopefully they take it back to their locker and not throw it in the garbage. So there, there is waste, I'm not going to say there's not.
Yeah.
But I think it's also, if they feel they, they take it because they wanted to take it versus you must go back and have it. That's where you get problems.
When they go through the line, do they have to take the entire lunch?
No.
No. So they could say, "I just want the sandwich, skip the fruit vegetable." No, they can't do that, they have to take.
No, they have to take certain things. They have to take a, a minimum of. So, they can decline two of those items, but one of them has to be a minimum of a half a cup of fruit or vegetable.
Do you think the waste is greater since these guidelines were implemented?
I think initially, yes.
But now, it's kinda...
I think it's kind of leveled off. You know, there are days when maybe you try something a little different, you know, or sometimes time is a factor as well. So, you know, we look at all of that and what didn't go over. I look at production records every day, and...
And if something's really not... What about the machines? Aren't you stacking the machines with healthier stuff?
We have, yes, the smart snack that started this year, smaller portions within the guidelines.
Are kids eating?
They are, but again, the variety is not quite as it used to be. These companies are still reformulating some of their products, and, but they're, I think they're getting used to some of it, the kids, it's just the younger ones are more receptive to it.
So, there's less waste at the middle, or the little grades than there is at the high school?
Well, I think it depends on, you know, the meal and...
What's still the number-one meal?
Pizza and chicken nuggets.
Can you serve that? Honey with the chicken nuggets?
We're gonna make a honey and mustard dressing like no other other school.
Could you leave out the mustard?
So, the food that gets thrown away, I mean, is there any possibility, like, the egg department could take something and get worms and create plant food and things?
Compost?
We compost at the middle school. We compost all of it at the middle school.
Same with the learning center, I don't know who's in charge of everything.
Crop takes care of that.
Yeah. I don't know at the high school if they compost, but they do those, that's a good thing.
We have a school garden at the middle school, and so we compost it, then use it
to enrich the gardens. We've expanded our gardens each of the last few years.
Basically, the green team's looking to develop something.
Do you get anything from the community garden?
Yes, we do. I just don't have the amounts, it's left at the high school, you know, right at the high school, and it's distributed from there, but we've gotten a lot of things. We've got a lot of different kinds of peppers and cucumbers and tomatoes and onions, and it's been utilized in all of the schools.
Dar, the theory from the federal government is that if you give these kids this food, they'll try it and learn to like it. Are you seeing that happening at all?
I, yes.
I know it's hard to tell, but do you think that theory works?
I think the theory works if you introduce it right when they're young, and you start, you know, they, like naming and starting to name the vegetables, different types of, you know, names, and Popeye's spinach salad. If you start, start slow and introduce it at that level and then keep going, I mean, we were introducing spinach a long time ago before these were requirements. They say you don't put it all at once, just mix a little bit in, and as it got to the middle school, then they were mixing more in, and you could see the kids actually taking more and more and liking it. So, it does take time, but it's very doable.
What about participation numbers? Since these new rules went into effect, the kids complain, you know, it is enough to fill them up, are they bringing lunch from home more than they used to? Or just supplementing what they have at school?
The participation rates, they, if you look on that, the one with the red fund balancing at the top, there are daily participation rates from 2010 all the way through 2014, and for lunch, you will notice that if you look at the overall average, it's 66 percent, and in 2010, 2011, it was 69. So, it's gone from 69 to 69 to 68 to 66. So, we are seeing that, and that's not just this district, it is nationwide.
But not as bad as I would anticipate.
No, and I'm hoping that with some of the new things that we are trying, because it is generating some interest, we're working with some other classes, and Mary Phelps has been promoting, we're doing some different things, that there will be some increased interest in it, and, you know, just baby steps and keep working at it.
So, if I'm reading this right, in 2013, 14, 7 percent of those eligible for free ate, 30 percent did not.
Would there be, looking at those numbers, the biggest drops that impacted the total average dropping down to 66 really were the change in 2012, 13 to 13, 14 for free and reduced. Those are where the dramatic shift down is. Would anybody have any speculation as to why those two areas would have had a larger drop than...
No, you'd, you'd almost think the paid would be the category that would be the...
I didn't expect anybody would, but I was just wondering if anybody had any observations I might explain at all.
What we're hoping to do, too, is now we have a wellness committee, we want to introduce, bring kids into our wellness team and start the process of integrating the entire district in that, not just from the adults, which I wanna kinda go bottom up and try to bring a few members onto our team and expand that from a different angle.
Can you speak up a little?
We're going to...
Boy, you're right into Carl's path.
We're hoping to expand kids into our wellness team, not just, not just the adults, as we expand into this next year, bring a few kids, and you can see our website, right now, we have all the kids at work on it, they're pretty excited to put that together, and so, that's what we're hoping to bring, hopefully, this can bring some energy into that, the eating of the healthy stuff, too.
Dar, do you have foodservice volunteers?
No.
Do you see, or are you gonna let them come in with their own knife and chop vegetables for you?
It would be, it would be kinda complicated. I prefer to, you know, have people that are trained in there that use our equipment. And we had our sanitation, sanitation inspection on the fifth, and he was so complimentary, he couldn't find, he says, "I cannot find anything to even write up." He said, "You should try to find a little to make it worth his time," but he said, "I can't find nothing." So, I was, yeah, everybody just... What was that up there?
Did we have someone different doing the inspections?
For the past three or four years.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Why don't you tell her what you really think, Dowsky? Where are those real nice cookies with the chocolate chips? Okay, consent agenda. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, Dave.
Betty Mannion.
Yes.
Sandy Robinson.
Yes.
Stephen Johnson.
Yes.
Kirsten Greenfield.
Yes.
Steven Shambow.
Yes.
Before you go to the next one, I just, at your place is this focus, it came yesterday, I think, and I didn't wanna just add it on to the agenda, I wanted to point it out to you, the title is rather catchy, and this will be on next year, so it gets posted, the next month, so it gets posted, but it's back, tax rate, I just hit some local government. I've been talking to you for years about the tax rate, it's really, we have little control over the tax rate, it's a function of the property valuation and things like that, and over and over again, I read school districts saying, "Well, yeah, look at us, we were able to keep our tax rate the same." And that's really irrelevant to the discussion of how well you manage your money, and this article points that out quite, quite well. Did you say that right, Carl?
Yeah, you did.
Suppose we ought to all take it home and read it?
In case someone asks you about tax rate and about, you know, what happened to our tax rate and why it go up, this might help you answer this. Todd Berry does this, and he does pretty much the same thing every year, puts the same examples, but it's, the reason he does it is because it is so misunderstood, and people tend to find, and I know we all, not here, but other places, they look at what makes them look the best, and then they promote that, and so, sometimes you read things that just don't make, quite make sense.
Who's "we"? Okay. Consent agenda? Okay. Is there a motion, Koochert?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, everyone.